Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oil. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by Julie and Colin. Hey, guys.
Hi, everyone.
How you doing, everybody?
We're really excited to have you here today, where we're going to talk about mini challenges. These are something that you can offer in a really simple, straightforward way to help you engage your leads toward curiosity about product and to help your customers get engaged and into product use. So there's a multi-purpose angle here that we're going to be pursuing. If you are unfamiliar with us, we are good oiling. We're excited to have you here today. We have these calls every Thursday at noon US Eastern Time. Go ahead and come into the chat. Let us know where you're coming in from and what you're excited to learn about today. This is a place for you to learn and grow as a brand partner and get oiling is the place for you to get it all done, stay organized and level up how you run your business. So what you'll learn about here today are concepts that will support you, whether you are using get oiling or not, but you are going to want to be using get oiling by the time we are done here today. And I'll give you a little surprise here in a bit and you'll see why. But in the meantime, go ahead, say hello. We're excited to have you here. Welcome from Finland. I'm gonna be bringing you out to work with you here in just a bit. Hi, Sean from Nebraska, Bridget in Tennessee. So great to have you guys. All right, keep it coming. We love you. All right, we're gonna pop out a video and get into today's educational content. We've got a lot to show and tell today. Really thrilled to be back here again. It's our favorite day of the week to work with you guys here on these calls. So welcome. Today, we're going to talk about how we can get new leads for our young living business and introduce our customers to new products using a very simple concept. We're going to call a mini challenge. Everybody's heard of a challenge before, right? Like you've seen people marketing challenges. Here's the seven day challenge to get XYZ benefit, right? Here's a 30 day challenge. Here's a 28 day challenge, four day challenge, right? That's what we are really looking to do here, but we want to make this mini. And I'll talk about what I mean by mini in just a bit, but I think you're gonna really love this because it's very easy to do. All right. So today, we're going to talk about how many challenges create engagement and build trust with your leads and with your customers. We're going to talk about what a simple mini challenge successfully looks like, right? So if we are going to set up a mini challenge, how can we make it work? And how can we keep it simple for us? Because we don't want to spend all of our time doing this. We're also going to talk very importantly about how to automate and deliver your challenge using get oiling and how you can create an opt-in page that converts and connects to your challenge. And then, of course, as always, we'll have live help and Q and A. So if you have questions, head over into the Q and A here on our live Zoom call. You do have two absolutely brilliant brains waiting here, Colin and Julie in the wings. Excited to help you guys. If you have questions, if it's something you'd like for me to address or go over with you, screen sharing, we will go get into that in the second half of the call. If you're watching this as a replay, come join us. This is an opportunity to get your questions answered and to work together and of course, to meet your incredible team, Young Living community from all over the world. And if you'd like to work together live as our friend from Finland will be doing here today, go to get oiling.com/website review, sign up for a dedicated space. It's totally free. We do this in the second half of these Thursday calls and you'll have an opportunity to get eyes on the work that you're doing, get hands-on help, whether it's tech, strategy, you name it. It's an opportunity for you to plug in and grow. And again, as a good oiling community member, it's 100% free for you. And if you would like to pay somebody to take care of some things for you, that is an option as well. From VA services to done-for-you websites, everything that you need to help you get set up and running exactly the way that you want with get oiling. We've got options for you at good oiling.com/concierge. So let's talk about a mini challenge. How many of you have participated? Maybe pop your hand up. Let me know. Have you ever opted in for to participate in a challenge? If you recall, at the beginning of the year, there was a 30-day living young challenge that Young Living did, right? These can be wildly popular and challenges are really popular because they're very engagement focused, right? It's a great way for you to really get somebody to pay attention to what you have to say, often on a daily basis for what can be an extended period of time. And when you've got somebody's attention and intention, you can get really incredible results, right? So let's talk about a mini challenge, right? So if you're familiar with that 30 days living young challenge that Young Living launched at the beginning of the year, we're actually going much smaller than that. So let's talk about why we want to do that. The reason why we want to do this is we want to kickstart a new habit, a new goal, a new solution with small steps. The main reason why we want to focus on small steps is because it requires very little commitment and very little consideration as to whether or not somebody has the time or is serious enough, right? If it feels doable, people are more likely to do it, right? So a mini challenge is is mini on purpose, not just to save you time, but really importantly, to be more effective as a way to get people in because there's very low commitment required, right? But at the same time, we're maximizing engagement and trust because we're delivering value without overwhelm or having someone believe that they have to absolutely transform their life or take hours and hours out of their day or week to be able to get the goal or result that you're promising, right? And then ultimately, it allows your leads to experience results without commitment. And if you're doing this for your customers, it helps them to get more out of their products in a way that is relevant to what their goals are, which is really important. If you aren't placing the outcomes that are relevant to your customers or your leads first, then we lose them. They're not going to care about, you know, what's in Nisha or how thieves is different or why seed to seal matters, not going to care about any of that stuff unless it's relevant to what they know they want, right? And until they know they want Young Living to show up on their porch every month, we gotta come at this from a different perspective, right? And that's why these challenges are still valuable for both leads and for customers. So these many challenges are going to last from seven to 28 days. I'm going to encourage you to stick to the smaller end of this, right? A week, I think, is really great. Four days, also fantastic, right? The mini really refers to simplicity here and not just the length. You can take the same format and go longer. I would just encourage you to stick to the shorter side because you're going to tend toward efficacy, especially with with leads. With customers, you might be able to get away with a slightly longer length there, especially if they're people who are already committed to monthly orders. Now, the delivery method for your challenge, and this is what makes this mini. It's very low tech for you. It's very simple for you. You don't have to go out and create a vault in your member area for people to discuss things and to log into. The interaction is very simple because we're just using a campaign here. We're going to send out a daily email or a daily text and there's no other content required from you. And we're focusing on an achievable daily action step toward a desirable named goal or outcome. And these, of course, are ideal to kickstart new habits. Now, for leads, these are not going to explicitly be product habits, but for customers, they absolutely, absolutely will be, right? We're going to say that it's Nisha if it's for customers, but if it's for leads, it's about energy, right? Okay, so the simple formula for a mini challenge is as follows. First, we're going to pick a problem, a goal or a habit. It needs to be something that is simple enough to start today, right? So if this is a mini challenge, we are not going to promise that they are going to, you know, lose 20 pounds in 20 days, right, or in or in seven days, even more or less, right? So we want to choose something that's simple enough to start today. So that might mean capture 20 minutes of calm in your morning so that your days are stress-free. I'm going to show you how to do that every day and make it a habit for 28 days, right? And and so we can say, I'm going to mom, busy mom, I'm going to show you how you can reclaim some of your time so that the rest of your day is peaceful every day. And I'm going to show you how to do that in just a week, right? That's a doable thing that you can help solve. And everyone here, oils are absolutely the key to getting done, that thing that I just told you, right? That example, everyone here has access to that as a solution to be able to help people with that. So once we decide what our problem or goal or the habit is, then we're going to outline the steps. What do they need to do and what do they need to know? If they're a customer, what product do they need to use, right? So remember, when you're going about this, that we need to have different language and ultimately a different challenge for our customers than we have for our leads. Because for customers, we don't have to sell them Young Living. They're already in, right? But for leads, we have a lot of trust to build. We have a lot of ground to cover. So what you're really going to be doing is educating more on concepts and suggesting product in some cases gently with leads, but with customers, you're going to connect product and steps to outcomes in a more explicit way. Because again, this person is already a customer, we're helping them get more out of their relationship with Young Living, right? So once we're clear on those steps, we're going to create a campaign and get oiling. The first message that goes out is an ASAP or day zero message. That's going to prepare them, tell them everything that they need to know. And then daily messages are going to guide them with whatever those steps are that you're prescribing on a daily basis. You're going to be encouraging them because again, this is going to be showing up daily and maybe providing some supplemental education to the points that you're making. And then ultimately, we're going to offer this challenge on a landing page, connect that campaign so that when somebody puts their name and email in or their name, email, and perhaps their phone number, if you would like to deliver this via text, then they will actually be able to start receiving these messages that you've put together. Now, just a quick review, if you are unfamiliar with good oiling and its features, we do have these features included with your system, no matter what plan level you sign up with. So if you are just getting your feet wet with Young Living, you're just getting started growing your business, you can do this with our baby plans, right? Our $7 a month plans and $14 a month plans. Of course, all the way up to our most customizable and fully featured plans. So all of this is doable for anybody with any good oiling account. If you're using a landing page and a campaign, right? And a campaign, really all that is, is just a series of messages that are going to drip out over a set period of time that you select. So it might be every day or every other day based on when they sign up. And they do that signing up on a page on your giveaway link website, which we provide, that allows them to put in their information. And I'll show you some examples of this here in just a bit as well. Again, if you're unfamiliar, you'll see how to get all this done by the close of this call. So let's talk about how we structure a mini challenge for our leads versus for our customers. So many challenges for leads are going to include things like daily tips and action steps that are doable without product. Now, we can introduce product because I mean, what's the point of all this, right? Like, we do want to get some exposure, right? But the goal in everything that you do that's lead facing, in my view, is to bring people toward a conversation with you, right? Our goal is not to be marketers of Young Living's products. You are a brand partner, meaning you have a partnership with Young Living to help introduce Young Living to people. Now, if we go and just start shouting about product, we're going to lose the opportunity to really make that connection, right? To truly connect people with Young Living, the brand. So how do we do this? We build trust by showing that we want to help people and giving them ways to grow without ever having to put a dollar down first, right? So the idea here is, for instance, I was talking about helping a busy mom reclaim 20 minutes in her morning so that she can have a more peaceful day every day. We can tell her, because it's very easy for all of us to know, that if we make an agreement with our spouse, there's a step. We create a space in our home. It could be the corner of a room, a dedicated room, whatever that looks like for us to have that time to ourselves. And we set a block of time so that we are intentional about our time. Those are three things that we can tell somebody to do to create those 20 minutes in their morning and those things will work. Now, can we say, if you'd like to take this a step deeper, then I would encourage you to make sure that when you sit down in this space, that you turn on a diffuser, right? And here are some of the oils that I recommend based on what you might be dealing with. And this will help you get more out of this practice, right? If you put the value of those three steps that require no product first, you are going to have so much more receptivity to the suggestion of product when you bring it up. Does that make sense? Let me know in the chat. Give me a yes if that makes sense. So what we're doing when we're creating a mini challenge for our leads is we are not educating on product because they don't care about product yet. They care about what they care about and we need to meet them where they are. So we're going to give them steps that are actionable, that are doable, that are simple. And then we're going to show them how product can make that more effective, right? That's how we build trust and make introduction to product in a way that's truly effective. Now, the challenge really does need to be valuable on its own. Otherwise, you're going to lose trust with your leads. They're going to see that this is transactional and they just, you gave them basically a promise to give them something and now they're seeing that they're only going to get it if they put money down. That's not how we build trust. So what we want to do here is engage them and build relationships with them, gently introducing product as an aside. It's not centered in what we're talking about. And ultimately, giving some kind of call to action for them to reply to any of these messages so that you can initiate a conversation with them, a meaningful one that's tailored to them, listening to them, and then making recommendation for product for them based on what they tell you, right? It's that conversation that's going to have this person on loyalty rewards every month forever, right? We want to try to get conversations going with our leads. So here's an example of something we could do. We could do a seven-day stress reset. And the concepts that we'll cover are breathwork, movement and hydration. And we can mention products. Again, we're not centering them, but maybe we'll talk about stress away at some point, maybe mention lavender as well and vitality drops for hydration, right? So let's talk now about many challenges for our customers. This, if you're a product user and you love recommending product, this is going to be very easy for you, but just remember that this is for people who have already said yes to Young Living, okay? So the landing page here is going to list out the products that they need before they opt in for the mini challenge. Remember, this is for your customers and you want your customers to be equipped to be able to follow all of the steps, right? So this is where this kind of deviates, right? So your customers need to know what products they need before they get started with the challenge because the challenge is going to tell them how to use products every day. Cool. So we need to be clear on what those products are first and put them on the landing page. And then the emails are going to guide them through their to-dos, through the education, through the product use toward their goal, right? And so the goal ultimately here is to introduce our customers to new products and establish new product habits, right? So here's an example for your customers. We can do a seven-day wellness kickstart and cover concepts again, like hydration, toxin-free cleaning and energy and restful sleep. Here, we can mention lemon and peppermint vitality, thieves household cleaner, Nisha red, lavender and more, right? Because our customers have already said yes to Young Living. Now, let's talk about the campaigns. These are the primary way that we deliver the value of this challenge, right? It's these messages that go out on a daily basis. So for your leads, we've got our day zero. We're going to set expectations. So tell them what they are basically going to need to do every day. So are you going to be sending them a message every morning at 9:00 AM Eastern Time? Say so, right? Is there a step that you know that they're going to need to follow every day? Do you want them to go ahead and grab a journal and put it next to their bed? Do you need to, you know, inform your spouse that you are going to be engaging in this new, this new challenge, right, this new habit building procedure and you need their support in X or Y way, right? So set the expectations, give some initial instructions on your day zero and on days one through however many long this challenge goes. You're going to provide those daily action steps, encouragement, tips. And of course, you can mention product as a way to elevate results. But again, really make sure that the value is in the steps, the encouragement, the tips, et cetera. Show them that you are here invested in their success and they will respond to you with openness for the products that you mentioned later, right? Now, for our customers, again, we're going to set expectations just like we do for our leads on that first day. This is going to go out immediately ASAP. So if they sign up at 10:00 PM on a Tuesday, they are going to receive that message a little after 10:00 PM that Tuesday, right? But day one and onward is going to go whenever you have it set. So if you have it scheduled for 9:00 AM, 5:00 PM, which is our default, 5:00 PM Central US time is our default time that it'll go out. Otherwise, then let them know, right? And then again, on those subsequent days, you're going to provide daily action steps for product use, the specific products that you're recommending and told them to get before they signed up. And then, of course, you've got encouragement and tips and anything else that you wish to include to help your person, your customer in this case, actually get started with this habit or achieve this goal, right? Now, the final step in this process is to create your landing page and connect everything because the landing page is what you share, okay? So what I want you to do is create a dedicated landing page for each challenge that outlines the outcomes and sets expectations. So the version for leads, excuse me, is going to focus on benefits and transformation and product is not mentioned on the landing page. Leads are generally speaking, not going to be even remotely interested in a Nisha challenge. If you call it a Nisha challenge, right? And they're honestly, they're not the right fit for a Nisha challenge period because they need to have product and they need to know why Nisha is so good. And so if you're wanting to put Nisha in front of them, you are getting ahead of yourself. It's better to have that conversation first, right? Get Nisha in their cart, get them checked out, and then you give them a customer challenge that uses Nisha every day, right? So here we're focusing on those benefits, the transformation, and we're not mentioning product on the landing page. But for customers, again, absolutely, list all the products that they should expect to use because they don't need to be day three into the challenge realizing that they needed to place an order before they get started, right? So include that list of recommended products to order before getting started for your customers. And then that campaign that you've created already, you're going to attach that to your landing page that all of the signups are automatically added to the challenge. Now, if you checked your email today and you are on our list, you have received a resource that is already done for you and ready to go. And I'm going to show you right now how you can claim it and put it to use. So this resource bundle here includes a mini challenge for your leads and for your customers. It's already done for you. So all you got to do is log into your get oiling account. Doesn't matter what plan level you have. You go over here, you click grant permission and claim bundle. And now you have your landing page and campaign for both types of challenges. So let's go take a look at this real quick. So I'm going to go to the landing page first and I'm just going to view it and show you what this would look like for a lead. So this is our seven-day stress reset challenge. Feel less stressed in just seven days without overhauling your life. Some daily habits take just a few minutes, but make a lasting impact. Join the free seven-day challenge and start feeling calmer, more energized and in control. This is done for you, guys. You don't need to do anything else but use this. We're going to tell them here, we're going to get a simple three-step daily routine. We're going to get quick actionable steps delivered straight to our inbox each day, small but powerful changes and a natural way to feel calmer, clearer and more present. And when they sign up, they put their name and email in right here and they are in the challenge. I'm going to actually go ahead and demo this for you here. And I'll then go and show you how you can actually make modifications to this if you wish. So here you go. You're officially signed up. Here's the expectations. Go check your inbox. Here's what to expect. And and then, of course, the emails will start sending. I'll get the day zero one right now. And then I'll get one a day for the next seven days. Now, what am I going to be receiving? I'm going to be getting this campaign right here. This is the seven-day stress reset challenge for leads. Let's go take a look at what that includes. We've got our first one that sets expectations, telling us that our reset starts tomorrow. So let's go ahead and take a look at that. It's already pre-written for you. There's nothing really that you need to edit here. You can keep this exactly as is. You don't need to do anything with it. And then from day one onward, we've got something that we are recommending each day. So here I'm going to tell them to have this routine, right? So six 60 seconds of deep breathing inhale. So I'm actually teaching them the the 444 breathing technique. I'm telling them to drink 16 ounces of water first thing in the morning before getting out of bed and spend two minutes on movement or stretching. And I'm telling them it doesn't seem like much, but these things add up fast. And I'm telling them why it works. And then I'm telling them, hey, if you want to make this more powerful, I start, you could add this blend. And so I said, when I first started breathwork, I struggled to get into a relaxed state until I started rolling this blend onto my wrist beforehand. Now it's a non-negotiable part of my routine. Try it for yourself and let me know how you feel. See you tomorrow. All right. So I'm going to go here and actually show you. This is already coded to you. So when you send this out, and and I should note here, if you are outside of the US, you may need to make a change here with a leaf link, but this is the stress away roll-on. Let me actually copy this and show you. It's going to automatically import your member number. And I'll show you how to do this. If you, again, this is US English. If you want this in a different language or if you want to make this, you know, obviously something for a different market. I'll use Canada as an example here. So I'll just go to youngliving.com and select Canada, English. And I'll type in stress away. Here we go. So I'm going to copy this product here, this URL from the top. And then I'm going to edit this message by coming over here. This is the URL I'm going to be swapping out. I'm just going to pop down here for a second and show you this little leaf link feature. And you can do this on on really any of of the messages. And you should, if you need to change this for your market. So you're going to click on more miscellaneous. It's these three dots over here and click this leaf. We call this the leaf link. Insert Young Living link with my member number. And I'm going to paste in that product. Now, when you signed up for get oiling, you gave us your Young Living member number and it is going to automatically populate that into a link right here. So what I'm going to do now is copy this link. Actually, here, I'm going to unlink it. So it's just text. And then I'm going to copy it, delete it, and then paste it right in here. So once I have that updated, this is going to, of course, for my leads, send them straight to purchase this product from me on Young Living's website, right? So that's what that leaf link is all about. So you just go in and save that message. So again, if you are in a different market, you will want to go in and make this modification, depending on where you are by following that step of using the leaf link. I'll give you just another example here of what we're talking about in the second day. We're focusing on breathwork here. And in this one, we're using the four, seven, eight breathing method, talking about why it works. And then I mentioned diffusing lavender, right? And you can see how this is, this is very simple. It's short, it's sweet and it's not really pitching. It's not giving a ton. It really is just little bite-sized bits. And there is a little product recommendation just about every day. But we are asking them to hit reply, right? Hit reply. Let me know what shifted for you, what you'd like to learn about next, right? Because remember, the goal here with leads is to initiate conversations, all right? Now, let's go take a look really quickly again at this landing page in the settings. And I'll show you where this is all connected. There's that campaign we were just looking at. It's right up here, seven-day stress reset challenge for leads. I am tagging all leads who opt in with this seven-day stress reset and leads because this is for leads. And this is that message that popped up after I opted in. Now, where they're going next in this case is just for the website homepage. You can obviously modify this. If you have get oiling basic or higher plans, maybe you have a custom homepage or you want to send them to a confirmation page. You could certainly do that here as well. Now, what if you would like to deliver this or the customer campaign via text? Let's go look at our campaign settings. And I'll show you some modifications you can make if you want to send either of these via text. So go to the campaign, whichever one, and go to settings. And you can see here that I've chosen email preferred. Now, you can choose text only, text preferred or email and/or text. If you would like to allow people to just simply text in a keyword to your get oiling account, then you could actually go down here under text and keywords and add a keyword in here. So I might say the keyword is stress reset, all one word, right? And if somebody types in in their phone to my get oiling numbers, stress reset, it would start sending these messages out. Now, if you are going to utilize this as a text campaign, know that what is going to be sent to them is going to be a little blurb. It's going to say just a little bit here and then there's going to be a link to read more, right? So it says, read more when they click and they open it up. Then it's going to take them to what is sort of a hidden page on your website that will display this message, including the links and everything like that. So if you wanted to use text for that, you can make those modifications in the campaign. And if you would like to use the landing page and also collect phone numbers, you can choose to show phone and even require phone if you prefer. You could always add that text to the text box. Yes, that that is another option if you really wanted to. It's just going to be a lot of marketing credits for you to send this out by text, right? Like you could copy the body of this and put it down here. But I think that it's just as effective to just send out that other format because this is a bit long of something to send as a dedicated text message on its own. And depending on how big of a list you have, this can be quite a bit costly and not necessarily more effective for the cost in terms of utilizing text that way. And that's obviously, your mileage may vary. It's totally up to you, but that that's my insight and recommendation there. All right. So that is the lead focused, the lead focus challenge. Let's go take a look at the customer-focused challenge. Now, this one is a a simple daily habits wellness reset. And this is a a simple daily habits wellness reset. And this is a seven day challenge as well. We're going, we're telling them actually what we're using. So there's lemon vitality. We're using Thieves Household Cleaner. We're using Ningxia Red and we are using lavender and Stress Away. We're telling them what they need, right? Check to see you have these products on hand before getting started. And here again, we can collect name and email. You can use text, just like I mentioned as well. You do have a confirmation message that appears here. And of course, there is the campaign that you get as well. And that's going to be slightly different because it is going to talk more about product specifically, right? So here we're going to tell them that our challenge starts tomorrow. And we tell them what we're going to do and we're telling them that they're going to watch their first message tomorrow morning. And then you can go through and see all of this. And you'll see that for customers, we aren't actually linking products because we're assuming that, well, these are customers and this is for you for products that you already have, right? So if you'd like to link these, you can, you just don't necessarily need to because they have an account and they can go search for this when they're logged in and they can purchase, right? Another thing that you could absolutely do is to create a wishlist and have a wishlist link for like put create a wishlist with Young Living and put that link, include that maybe at the outset for your customers to go and and add those to their cart so that they can start this challenge with all the products that they need. But here again, we've got our full seven days of sending messages and giving insights and instructing on product use, et cetera, right? And that's essentially it. You've got two landing pages. You've got two campaigns paired up for either customers or for leads. All right. Lacey says, I'm not understanding how to get all this on my website. I have claim bundles, but it doesn't show up on the website. What video? Yeah. So if you've claimed this, that it is on your website, it just doesn't necessarily mean that it's in the menu for your website, right? So if you wanted to say, offer that lead focus landing page on your website, let me actually show you. So this is the seven day stress reset challenge for leads is the landing page. And the title of that, and this is what we could put maybe publicly on our website, the title of this is, let me see. Just a second, I could tell you. If I go view here. Okay, seven day stress reset challenge. So that's the the page that we're actually going to be sending them to. And if I go over to my website, you're not actually going to see this from my website unless you share the link. Right? So when you claim pages, they are in your account. They just aren't necessarily set up for being discovered. Right? So if you want to share this landing page, the best thing to do is going to be to go to your landing pages, your list of landing pages. Copy the link. And let me find, here we go. That's it right there. So I'm going to copy the link and I can email that to people. I can put that in my social profiles. I could put it in my posts, my link in bio, et cetera, right? I can promote this link because I want people to land on this page and say, oh, my gosh, yes, I would love to feel less stressed in seven days without overhauling my life. I would give you my name and email for that, right? So you're going to promote this page. And so instead of promoting your website, right? So yourname.com or whatever you have set up, you're going to promote this. And you're going to put it everywhere that you show up, right? That's, this is what you're now promoting. But if you want somebody who goes to your website to be able to find this, then you're going to go to your menu, which is right here under website and blog. And depending on how you have yours set up, I'll actually show you how this, obviously, this is an example of a custom website. She has a learn menu that has a few things here, right? So I'm going to maybe put this under the learn menu. So if I go to my menu here, you can see learn has lots of options. I'm going to add an item. And this is going to go to a, let me see. A website link and I'm going to paste that in here. That's my landing page link. I'm pretty sure that the landing pages don't show up here. Let me see. Yeah. So you want to actually take the URL. Unless I'm missing that here. Yeah. So you're going to just go website link. Paste that URL in there. And I just grabbed that from, just to remind you, that's this one here, the published version of your landing page, right? So you copy this link. You select website link, you paste it in here and I'm going to say, I'm going to call this seven day stress reset. And I'm going to click done. And I'm actually going to drag that up here. I'm not going to put it above my blog and events, but I'm going to make it maybe the top option for people to select in that menu. So if I save this and then I come back over here to the learn menu, you can see my seven day stress reset is here. And when I click it, it takes us over here. I did not click open a new window. No, this is this is just taking them straight there. You're just going back. Opening in a new window is, it's a strategic thing. It's okay if we're going straight from my homepage, right? Or from like my navigation menu. I don't necessarily need to open it up in a new window. Sometimes I might do that, but for something like this, you don't necessarily need to. And you can see that I actually have other things listed here as well. So here's a gardening journal. This is also a landing page offer. We've got a sway here and then we're offering the Grow Workspace thing. They put in their name, email and phone and they can, you know, get another lead magnet that I'm offering. So essentially what we're doing here, this is a funnel, you guys. This is a a lead magnet that is fully done for you, that engages your people and gets them curious about product, right? So you can treat this just like you would treat any other funnel on your website. Except, you know, what we're doing here is we don't necessarily have to offer a download, right? You don't have to come up with something like that. You can just simply show up in their inbox for seven days and provide them with value. Now, what if I want to provide this to my customers? Now, for my customers, I might not necessarily put that in my website menu. My website menu is public, right? I want this to show up in a private space for my customers. So maybe you have an unpublished page or a, well, not unpublished, but a a hidden from the rest of the world page on your website or password protected blog post, et cetera. You could do something like that. Or if you have a vault for your members, which is a private space on your own website. If I have, here we go. This is my education and support for customers vault. This is where I could include maybe in my class, here's my oily education, perhaps. I'm going to create a lesson and call this. Actually, no. Do I have one that's already focused on stress? I'm just going to go command F and type in stress. Yes, I do. Stress, Sleep and Sadness is actually one that Grow Workspace created. But if you already have a class where you're talking about stress, go ahead and just include this, right? So we could also say here want a seven day challenge to help you de-stress. Oops. And then I can say, no stress, text no stress to, and I'm going to put in believe that code is my underscore phone. I can double check that. And that's going to display your Git Oiling phone number. And actually, before I move ahead, let me just go ahead and validate that I am correct there in using that short code. So if I go to write a new message, you can actually see these. Just pretend like you're going to write a message to someone. These right here, my info, my phone number is my underscore phone. Yeah. So that's what I needed to know. Great. So text no stress to my phone. And you can actually just include this, provided, of course, that you put no stress as your text in code, right? But the other option here as well, of course, could be to grab that URL and share the link to this. Or visit this page to sign up, right? And I can just go ahead and hyperlink that there. There's the link. It will not send it to that link. No, actually, it'll actually just deliver the campaign instead of them signing up on the landing page. So these are two different options, Lacey. If you have, and I have actually haven't set that campaign up yet, so I'm going to copy this no stress and go over, save my changes here. I'm going to go back over to my campaigns and find my customers campaign. Here we go for, where's my one for customers? We go back to my. Well, anyway, you're going to go to the one that you have for customers. And just make sure that you go under your settings here. And just make sure that it says no stress right here. If you put no stress as the example here, then when somebody texts no stress to your Git Oiling phone number, then of course, it's provided that you have one set up that is optional. But if they text this in, then they will just start receiving this campaign and they'll totally bypass the landing page. It's just a different option. AJ, do we have access to that gardening journal? This is actually something that Grow Workspace provided some time ago. And I believe you might be able, I don't know where to find that in Success Academy necessarily. It's from several years ago. But there is a resource bundle for it that Grow Workspace provided. Not really sure that that's here. I don't, yeah. It, I think it's a lead magnet training. All I know is, is that that is something that Grow Workspace delivers. So and I think that that's something that they gave away for free at some point. So I could maybe maybe reach out to Grow Workspace if you use them and ask them for the gardening journal. Okay. Let me see if there's any other questions that we can get to here. Okay, excellent. Good. Vanilla, are you here still? Love to bring you out and chat with you. How can we help today?
Yes, hello. Nice evening. Thank you. Yeah. I had some problems with the payment method because I have one new product in my store. I activated the store and then I noticed that when everything was working fine until I want to put my shipping address there. And there I only shipping, so where the product is sent. And then there was only Canada, US and Australia or something, three countries. And, and yeah, and if somebody wants to order it from Finland, they should not get it. So I missed already one customer because
Oh, my goodness. Okay. Okay.
When I went to Stripe, I went to Stripe and I made some changes there. I managed to change that to my other product, but it's not, it's only a product in the world. But this another product, it's still not working. So I don't know what to do.
Okay, yeah. So if we come over here, we're logged into your account and we go to a store. Let's go to store settings. There we go. We go to store settings. And then under shipping. Allow shipping to these countries.
Okay, that was so, oh my.
There we go. Yeah. So you want to include, yeah, make sure that all of the countries that you know you're willing to ship to. You could also select all, right? I think that there is a default. I think there's a default US, Canada, Australia. I don't know. Can't speak to it. I didn't create that setting, but but you want to go in and make sure that you are selecting the countries, you know, select all if you'll ship anywhere. But if if there are specific countries that you will ship to, then you can actually manually select those here.
Yeah, I, yeah. Okay. Thank you. This was easy.
Oh, wow. That's, that's it. Okay, good. I'm so happy we can clear that up.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course. Excellent, excellent. Okay, good, good, good. Excellent. All right. Anybody else have questions? Anything else you would like to talk through or look at together? Or if there's anything that you would like a review of, definitely let us know. Pop in your questions into the Q and A. Allison says, what do you think about creating a section on the website for challenges? So like you could have, so if you have a few challenges, which if you've been around us and getting content from us for a while, which I know you have, or from Grow Workspace or other places, and you have multiple challenges that you can offer, you could certainly create a page on your website and have that page display all of the different challenges and link off to all of the landing pages or have the text in codes. You could do that. Another option would be to utilize automations. If you want somebody to be able to opt themselves in to enroll in your challenge with just a click from an email or a text. You can use an automation as the URL for that to apply that campaign by passing the landing page. Lots of options there. But yeah, if you have a few and you want to just have a page on your website, you call it challenges. You would have a little write-up about each of those challenges that you offer with a link to go off to the landing page to sign up. Let's see. Is there a training to help me plan and organize my business? What strategies do I want to implement? For example, there are so many things I would like to incorporate and I end up getting so overwhelmed. Kind of looking for someone to help me step by step. So it says iPhone here. Sorry, I don't know your name. Thank you for asking this question. I'm going to show you what I believe is the most important place for you to begin and and focus on. And it's, I believe that this, these sort of, the set of concepts should be required viewing for anybody who wants to grow a serious business with Young Living. If you go to our live training and replays, I want you to go over to view by topic. It's going to take you to our playlists. And the one that I want you to look at is this one right here, the brand partner pipeline. Now I'm going to copy this link and put it into the I'm going to answer you with it here as a link and I'm going to pop it into the chat as well. But I want to encourage you, if you have not watched the trainings in this playlist, there are four of them in total. The trainings themselves are about thirty minutes. Of course, we do dedicate the second half of our calls to working one-on-one. So the videos are longer than the trainings themselves. Watch these in order and they'll give you the whole picture. There's a lot that you can do, but not necessarily a lot that you need to be doing all the time. And that goes through what is really most important in order. And and very specifically in order of what is proven to work and effective and works with any type of availability that you have. Obviously, there's a lot that you can add on, but it's what everybody needs to get started. So I would start with the brand partner pipeline and and follow what that says moving forward. Okay, is it important to define the shipping countries also if you sell digital products? I'm not an expert in this in particular, but I don't think that it's an issue. If you aren't physically shipping something, then I don't think that that that's an issue. Because that's, that that's a shipping setting. If you go and you look under the store, you don't automatically like not offer a digital product to all countries if you only have a couple selected. It really is about shipping things and where you would be willing to ship. Let me see. Is there a way to search classes? I'm trying to find the sleep, stress, emotions growth class to put in the stress campaign in there. Uh, that would be a thing. Maybe if you log into Grow Workspace, I think they do have a search feature. If you have access to all of their content. A very long time ago, I went in and got all of their stuff and organized it into classes. And they've actually, in the last couple of years, if you look for a sale, sometimes you'll find all of their content. What probably took me twenty hours to like manually put into a vault and format. They'll sell you for like, like a hundred ninety-seven dollars and it's worth every penny. So if that's ever on sale to get their entire sort of like pre-made vault with education, it's a no-brainer. You should buy it. Yeah, definitely. Yeah. Go to Grow Workspace. They're our friends. It's on our website. If you want to go straight over to them from there. It's on our partners page. They're up at the very top. We love them very much. Let me see. So a training on how to set aside time to plan for June. Ah, what do I want to accomplish? What can I put in place in May? So I'm ready for June. Hi, Felba. Yeah. So actually, next week, we're going to be doing content planning for the summer. So that is the plan for next week's call. We're actually going to talk about content. So that's really more the, what does it look like to put myself out there? And what steps do I follow? What time do I spend? How do I dedicate those efforts? So that is, if you're interested in what you're doing for your business, for your brand exposure and getting more leads, then don't miss next week. That's going to be a workshop on planning our content for the summer months so that you have everything figured out for June, July, August. And and just so you know, if you were around, I think we did this in February for for the spring. Spring content planning, we're doing this every quarter, right? So every quarter, we're going to have a call where we discuss content planning for the next one, right? So the next one coming up is going to be summer. Not necessarily regular quarter measurements, but seasons. We're doing seasons. All right. So yeah, I hope you, I hope you join for that. So Allison, the best way to do that, I believe, would be to look for, look in your campaigns and type in stress in your campaigns. If you've claimed that from, from If you've claimed that from from grow workspace, then it's probably in there in your campaigns. And typically, one of those campaigns is going to have a link to that sway file, right? So yeah, you'll probably find it there. Let's see, does it also talk about how to set time for planning and organizing? So yeah, kind of. It gives you some various, so the brand partner pipeline, that training is going to focus pretty squarely on how you spend your time on income producing activities. Right? And so that's going to be the the most high impact actions you can take for your business, which are 100% centered around, how can I have conversations with people right now who are most likely to say yes when I say, I can show you a way, would you like to see how? Right? Which is our setup for showing and sharing in living, right? So that's really what the brand partner pipeline is focused on is is sort of what, what are my systems for being able to take a conversation all the way through to close? And that close, that new customer, all the way through to they found their hero product, they love Young Living, they'll never stop ordering, right? So that's foundational stuff. Where you want to focus on how you spend your time getting yourself out there as a personal brand, the second thing that you want to look at is this one. And that's your content planning systems. And next week's training is in line with this. And so this, if you are unfamiliar with this series that we started just a short while back, we talk about how we can create and disseminate content and plan for the creation and dissemination of that content inside of a small block of time using right with AI and Trello as a planning tool. And actually provide for you in the checklist, actually provide for you the the actual Trello board template that you can use and all of the steps that you need to follow. So these, those really are like the top level, right? So if you feel like you've kind of mastered what it looks like to have a conversation, keep track of it, add notes in your get oiling contact manager, follow up the way that you need to follow up, et cetera, really the core, most important stuff about being a brand partner, you're going to find in the brand partner pipeline. And then where you're wanting to level up your, your brand and how people perceive you and start really getting leads coming to you, publishing on your blog, showing up on social media with posts that are effective, et cetera, then you're going to find that in content planning systems. And of course, we'll be here next week to talk about that as well. Excellent. Oh, good. Oh, good. I'm glad that that works and that's going to be helpful for you. All right, it might be a good idea to rewatch those and finally learn Trello. Yeah, yeah, definitely. Content planning systems, this is, so we actually did, here we go, monthly content planning for spring themes. We did a couple of months ago. And this is basically, we're going to do a repeat of this, but for summer. Right? And these are going to be the ones to get familiar with, but I am going to do a recap of these. Right? So I will be using the Trello board. Actually, if you go over to this first training here, it's really important that you follow these in order because they build on each other. But you'll find here the checklist and the Trello swipe file where you can actually grab this content planner. This is a template and you can create a new board from the template. Again, I walk you through exactly what to do in the video. And then there's just a step by step of what you do to plan. So the first, the first part here is to understand what a swipe file is, which is a really fun and interesting concept. It's going to be really helpful, I think, to you long term, staying organized and spending your time wisely. And then we get into what it looks like to plan a month worth of content and then to publish a month worth of content. So learn about this as a foundational basis for having a, an organized system. Right? Where you collect your ideas and plan for execution of them. That's this one. And then when you're ready to plan out what your next month or even quarter is going to look like from a content perspective, it's this one. And then what does it look like to actually publish and get oiling and on social media platforms? That's here, right? And then, of course, we've got the execution of that in our monthly content planning. And you can see the example of the one that we did here for spring. Yeah, so this Allison is in our playlists. So you can go to our YouTube channel and click playlist. The other option here would be to go under live training and replays and just click here where it says view by topic. And this is where you'll find the brand partner pipeline playlist as well as that content planning playlist here as well. And some others that are going to be helpful for you. All right, another question here. Oh, fantastic, Vanilla. I'm really glad that that was able to, able to get that sorted for you quickly. Until she loses sales in that way. So that's excellent. I love it when we get a win. Cool. Well, if you guys don't have any more questions, we're going to let you get going. And we'll be back here next week to work on our content planning for the summer. If you are interested in having all of your content pre-planned, set up, ready to go so that you can enjoy your summer, take advantage of that busy season and of course, maintain the kind of momentum and growth that you need going into the busiest and best opportune time of the year to be growing Young Living, which is right after convention, going into the fall and the holidays. You want to make sure that you are set up now, right? So don't wait. Hope you'll be at convention, by the way. Julie and I will be there at Roma sharing a few days before. Hope you'll come see us there. Look forward to seeing you guys again here next week. Till then, have a good one. Take care, everybody.